Okay, we will now move to our citizens who are here to speak with us in person and on the internet today. You will have three minutes each, and we will start. I'll call five names, and we will start first with Chris Benjamin, Herman Moore, Montreal Perry, Christopher Copeland, and Antonio Smith, if you will go to the mic, in that order.
Good afternoon, everybody, and to the board. Let me give you a recap on things that transpired and why I'm standing in for the solid waste workers today. Fifty-five years ago, April 4th, 1968, Dr. Martin Luther King got assassinated. He was in Memphis, Tennessee, fighting for the solid waste workers. So in the last fifty-five years, things hasn't really significantly changed as far as equal pay and being compensated across the board. That being said, we're here with our solidarity and our people that go out here and make it happen every day. And I want to stand and stay clear that it's important that we can make a little change for all the essential workers across the city of Durham. The second thing is affordable housing. We can't even afford to live in Durham when you work at Durham. There's nothing against the citizens or the community because we love what we do. We get up and we're ready to work every day. If you look at us now, we suited and booted to go to work right now. And the third thing is basically meeting us where we can be compensated so we can, you know, come to some type of agreement with some above-market rate with our money. Everybody know how the inflation is. Everybody know how the housing is. So we just want you guys to work with us across the board. It's not fair for the community, and it's not fair for the citizens. We're trying to do a job, but we also want to be compensated. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Herman Moore, and I'm with the Department of Solid Waste Management on the Bucket Services Division. And speaking on something that he said as well about our pay, we come to work every day. We work. We're just like the mailman. Rain, sleet, hail of snow, we have to go unless it's just unpassable. We're expected to be there and expected to do our job, and ninety-nine percent of the time we do. We're underpaid, overworked. The city of Durham is constantly growing, as we all know. The city is growing, the workload is growing, but the manpower is not. But the work is constantly getting done. So we feel like we need to be compensated. We need higher pay. We need consistent annually raises, and we need to, like he said, we need to be, and not just the solid waste department across the board with the city of Durham, all the different departments I can, and I'm not going to try to name them all, but we need to be compensated for what we do. Just like right now, that garbage is sitting out there. If it sits out there much longer, it's disease. Everything is being festered while that garbage is sitting there. We don't have a problem doing our job. Y'all know that a happy worker is a good worker. Y'all meet us halfway or somewhere where we can be satisfied with what we make, and we'll do our job. We can have citizens telling us all the time, "You do a great job," and we appreciate that. We even have our managers and supervisors tell us that we do a good job. We appreciate that. But show us, we gotta live. And like they said, a lot of people can't even live in Durham because we can't afford it. So we need to be, and we're called essential workers, treat us like essential workers. That's all I have, keeping it short and to the point.
Hey, how y'all doing, council? My name is Montreal Perry, Solid Waste. I just want to speak to y'all, you know, like, when it comes to this city work, like, the workers, we are like the foundation. You know what I'm saying? This is a building. Durham is growing. It is steadily building. And if your foundation is not strong, you know what I mean, like, you can't grow. It's like, and if you don't facilitate it and make your foundation as strong as it could be, it's just like, you know, like, you shady contractor. So it's like, the building's not gonna stand. If the city workers ain't being compensated, ain't being treated fairly across the board, and I feel like, how come we have to do this study for us to get paid? Because we have to study another city when we supposed to be leading. We are Bull City Proud. We are Bull City Strong. Other cities is supposed to be studying us to figure out the way to make it, the way to go. You know, we have a lot of pride in this city. So I just feel like, you know, the workers should come first, the foundation should come first, and everything else gonna fall in place. That's all I got to say.
How you guys doing? My name is Christopher Copeland. So we had a meeting yesterday, and I just wanted to speak on our open range plan. So it's been said that a raise is a raise, right? We got two percent this year plus a four percent for our performance raise. Our performance is not given to us. It's earned. If I'm not correct, somebody correct me. We need to be compensated. We want to go back to work. We miss the kids. We miss the people coming out and say, "Hey, how y'all doing? We love y'all. Thank you. Giving us water." We love our job. We don't want to drag this out. We just want to be compensated. That's all. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council people. My name is Antonio Smith. I'm a solid waste worker. I collect most of you guys recycling. I can honestly speak from the heart, and that's what I'm gonna do right now. I am a Durhamite. I born in Durham, raised in Durham. Everything I know is Durham. I started working city of Durham out of high school, 1995. I gave the city everything I had, and I appreciated everything I've seen in this city until now. I took this job to try to raise a family, to show them where I grew up was one that was, could be heartfelt. You can feel everything in your community. The thing about being raised by a village, we had a village. We really had it. We don't have it anymore, and at the same time, we try to get that back to that, which was just within our family. But we have to go to a different county to do that. To work for a city government and have to work outside that city government, I mean, work within that city government but live outside it, it hurts more than you think. To know that we had people actually with the opportunity to give us what we could to live in this city, to live, actually live, raise our children the same way we were raised, to be denied that opportunity is a slap in the face. I don't know how many of the council women and men that were raised in this city, but if you know, you know. If you don't, ask around. We glad y'all bringing in new people. Everything, that's wonderful. But when we stay here and work here, and we're from here, and we can't live here as adults, I don't know how y'all can look at us and say y'all appreciate what we do. We appreciate it, and we love every citizen in this county. They love us, and they show it. We stand right here in front of that building every day until something happens to see that you approve and you appreciate what we do every day. I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. We will now hear from Mr. James Chavis, Mr. James Davis, Ms. Meredith Carter, Ms. Sharlita Burris. We have a couple of folk on the internet, in that order.
Good afternoon. My name is James Chavis. I'm a citizen of Durham. It's a crying shame that y'all black folks sitting up there not doing the right thing by our black folks. I was raised here in Durham, so I know how garbage was taken from the very beginning. Men's had to go behind the house and pick the cans up and put them on their shoulders and take them to the front and go back and put that can back behind the house, and they could not bend them up. Because if they did, Miss Tamp, who was a white woman, would be called on, and the city of Durham had to replace it. So don't tell me you can't give them no money when you got a racial equity inclusion department. Ask these men what that means. Where has she been to go out there and ask these men and women? Why can she have them making a hundred and six thousand dollars a year plus with four or more of her workers? And they're asking you, why can't they get a raise higher than two percent and higher than four percent? They're not worth it? When the epidemic came, who was out there picking up trash every day? Huh? Were you, 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 or me? I want to say something, but I'm gonna hold it. They was out there, but they was not called first responders. Tell me where in there been written that they was known as first responders, but look all the disease and everything they had to collect and take out there? Miss Page, where is your consent to say enough is enough, and it's time for you to do better by these people? You are sitting in that seat. If any other city council or mayor are holding you back, tell us. Because if you don't, we gonna be asking for your seat next. Thank you.
It's gonna be kinda hard to follow that. But how you doing? My name is James Davis. I don't even know what to say because I get emotional when I talk about my family. You know, during COVID, we did things that we didn't even know we could do. We worked hard for the city of Durham. We came in every day. People standing up there, shooting temperature gauges at our head every morning, making us put on all these masks, putting on gloves, send us out on the truck by ourselves. Wow, the people that sit on top of us are sitting at home, waking up in the morning. They ain't getting dressed. They get on their little computers, shooting emails out, making breakfast, and sipping mimosas because they ain't got to do this in front of nobody. So while we out there picking up trash with our hands, dump the cans, trash fall on the ground, we got to get out there and get it up, not you. And then you sit around and hear you guys say, "Hey, y'all did a good job. We gonna give you three hundred dollars." What? Three hundred dollars? And then you gonna tax that? What we gonna bring home? What, about seventy-five dollars? I mean, not trying to be funny, but after you buy some bread, some two percent milk, you done. You might have to add five dollars with that. And to say that we already think that you guys that sit up here on this podium may have gotten bonuses this year, and I guarantee it won't three hundred dollars in no type of way, but that's what you extend your hand out here to us to do, and we keep this city clean, don't nobody recognize that. Then you call us essential. Solid Waste call us essential. You guys up here call us essential. That's all we hear. The city of Durham don't know that we are essential. Simple thing that bothers me the most, that doing all of this. And it's simple. The grocery stores opened up for essential workers back in, when COVID was open. Till nine-thirty, essential workers come in, can shop, get their food, then they gonna open regular office at ten o'clock. We showed up, showed our badges as essential workers, and they turned us around, told us we not essential. Tell us how that make you feel. Think about that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Happy Labor Day. My name is Meredith Carter. I've been a firefighter with the city of Durham for four and a half years, and today I'm a representative of Local 668 of the IAFF Professional Firefighters, and I'm here in solidarity with UE-150 city workers. Every time I'm up here, I like to remind you all, I make sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents per hour, almost two dollars below the Durham livable wage of eighteen dollars and forty-six cents per hour. That's after four and a half years. But this is not about me. This is about us. This is about the city workers and the people that keep this city running, people that pick up your garbage and keep clean water coming to your houses and go to your emergencies. The city workers keep this city alive. And like these gentlemen have been saying, in COVID, we came to work. We came to work every day because you can't pick up garbage working at home, and you can't put out a house fire working at home. And how did the city repay us? Our merit raises were frozen for two years during COVID. So this spring, we brought our grievances to you, and on June 20th, in this room, Local 668 and UE-150 stood united and watched this council vote four to three against restoring our COVID raises. How is that working out now? So since June 20th, since that vote, less than two months ago, thirteen firefighters have called it quits. That's going to cost the city, the taxpayers, close to three million dollars to replace those thirteen firefighters. Make it make sense. So Local 668 is here in solidarity with UE-150. We support their demands. We hope you do right by city workers today. Thank you.
I guess I put on this yellow because I'm getting ready to sting like a bee. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You know, I listen, and I'm not from Durham originally, but I've always had a heart for homegrown people. And y'all done got some thick skin now, and it's sad. Some of y'all don't even act the same. She done got elected. You don't act, and this is election time. These men and women do stuff that I couldn't do. Why are we putting these people down? And you know you ain't gonna get on no trash truck. You know you ain't gonna empty no trash. You know you not gonna put hoses on your back and climb up in a burning building. These people do this stuff because they got a heart, just like I got a heart. But y'all say, "Oh, Burris, you did a good job in the neighborhood. I'm not getting paid for what I do." You know why I do what I do? Because I love what I do. And when you love something and you really love it, you affect it. Because this foolishness right here, that's exactly what it is. Because y'all done forgot where y'all come from. I'm saying it today. Because if you could remember the times that you struggled, your parents struggled for you to help you get educated, and now you, some of you making over sixty-something thousand dollars a year or more, and more, but you're sitting up here like, "Okay, well, we heard it today. We gonna go in our chambers, stay fifteen to twenty hours, discuss it, and come back with no answer." Now, if you can live with that, then God got to deal with you. Because this is ridiculous. I got up at four forty, fifty-five hours on the road this morning. The only trash truck I seen was commercial. I ain't seen no city. I said, "Oh, my God, trash piling up. They come in my complex every morning at three thirty a.m." Some of y'all was turning over, breaking bubbles on both ends, sleep, while you got folks out there doing hard work. Y'all better get some love in your heart. You better be real or be steel, because God got your number.
Those are all the cards that I have, but I do believe that we have a couple of people on the internet to speak to us today as well. Ms. Jacqueline Wagstaff, Ms. Wagstaff, are you available?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You have a flu.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and just want to say to Herman, Montreal, Chris, Antonio, James, Meredith, and all of the many workers that are sitting in that room today, I commend you. I'm not gonna tell you you do a good job. I know you do a good job because when my trash get picked up, I am one of the happiest people in the world. And telling someone they do a good job is not how you pay your bills. And you were absolutely correct when you said that. But I want to go a little bit further. I want to talk about exactly what Mr. Chavis said and multiple speakers have said. We have elected officials, and they're sitting up there today. At least two that I see sitting there gonna make some grand speeches after this, 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 our public comment section is over. They're gonna make some wonderful speeches. They're gonna make you believe they care about you, but they have yet to increase your salaries. Now, they increased theirs. They gave themselves a ten thousand dollar raise. They made sure that, and they didn't say anything about, "We gotta do a study, and we gotta raise taxes." They did it. The same way, they put eight million dollars towards an unproven program. I'm not saying it's not needed, but it didn't need eight million dollars. An unproven program. They still didn't say we need to raise taxes. But when these workers have come down here pouring their heart out, and I'm sitting here holding back the tears when I'm listening to these stories, and they're telling you, "In order for us to raise, to give you what you need, we gotta do a study, and we gonna have to raise these taxes," that is very problematic. Not to mention, when I'm watching these same council members on helicopters flying over Sedona, Arizona, traveling, having a great time, living a life, opening restaurants in the high-rent district off of thirty-six thousand dollars a year, that's very questionable. And then you sit there and say you care about these people. Let's talk about what's really going on. Right now, like Ms. Burris said, there is an election. And if these people don't do right by you, I'm a firm believer that you can put them in office, and the same way you put them in office, you can take them out. I believe in taking people out that don't do right by the people. I believe that this city is not doing right by the people, and we have people on this council that want you to put them in the mayor's seat. They want you to put them back on council. They even came out there and stood with you yesterday with their bull crap. But at the same time, they have the power to change this situation, and I am challenging them on this day. Now, I know the pastor's gonna give y'all a sermon, and y'all gonna have to sit there and listen to it, but understand, sermons don't pay bills. Now, they might pay bills for him, but they don't pay bills for you. So understand, when you hear that sermon, take that to the pole. Take everything that y'all, that you see and you act and witness from this council, these individuals that want you to continue to support them if you still reside in Durham.
Ms. Wagstaff?
Take it to the pole. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Molini, if you would come to the, if you would unmute. And Ms. Johnson, you'll be after Ms. Molini.
I'm sorry, I'm here. I did not.
We can hear you now.
I did not sign, but I'm in solidarity with our firefighters and all essential workers.
You're coming in kind of gobbled, Ms. Molini. It's coming in kind of gobbled. So if you could start again, we're having trouble hearing you well. Yeah, it's coming in worse now. You may have to sign out and sign back in again, and we will let you speak when you're able to do that. Ms. Gloria Johnson, if you would come forth, ma'am.
Hi, y'all. I don't normally get involved with a lot of stuff, but I also born and raised in Durham. I left, I moved to San Antonio, Texas, and those people down in Texas embrace you. When I came back in 2002, Durham was a mess. Let me give a little history. In Durham, it was an honor to work three places: Duke Hospital, Bigger Than Mine, and the city of Durham. That being said, I can't speak for the city council or my supervisors, which we were hoping that they would have stood up here, because we make them look good when we do our job. We wanted them to come and administrators talk to you all, and we stand like soldiers. Because all of us will go to work tomorrow. I'm going to work tomorrow. In fact, I'm going back to work when we leave here, because I received an email that said I might get, have to use leave without pay. Out of seventeen years of working with the city, I only got one leave without pay, one. Okay, you're talking about the mid-range, the price range for your salaries. When I started, it takes you a long time to get midway, and some of you gentlemen in here know that by the time you're not, you're not gonna reach the step range, you will retire. Okay, that's fine. Rules and regulations. I don't have a problem with rules and regulations. When they gave us our bonuses and our incentive pay, I thought, okay, I didn't know that there was a problem or that it was not done correctly. I said I wasn't gonna say anything. Many gentlemen stood. I said, "I'm gonna stand like a soldier." But after hearing that, I say, "I gotta, I can't do it. If I'm gonna go back to 2115 East Club Boulevard and I die in the morning, I'm gonna work." I've been working out there in a hundred and ten degree heat, cold, snow. I'm grateful that you all gave us a raise. You didn't have to give us anything. So I was grateful, and I thought everything was straight. I didn't know. And when they said that, my cousin called and said, "They got a protest at City Hall." I was so tired, I didn't, I wasn't gonna go. I said, "Well, I tried to hear what's going on." Had a few reliable sources that said, "You know what? They, whatever their budget was, whatever it was, I don't know what it was. All I do, I'm my nose. I go to work, man. I'm at the line there." Many of y'all know that. So all I can ask is, whatever it is, let's get some options on the table. Work with our supervisor. Y'all get together. Let's come up with some options so all these fine gentlemen in here can go to work, and let's get this garbage out. I guarantee you, and I believe it in my heart, that if our supervisors, they got three different supervisors, if I'm understanding that correctly. And then I got two supervisors. I say, "If they would've came..."
Ms. Johnson, if you finish up your statement, then we'll...
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I just want to say, I was hoping that the administrator could've come and talked to y'all administrator, and let's put some options on the table, and let's do this. All we want to do is go back to work. I'm going back to work if it's four o'clock, because I was told, "If you don't, you might get paid, leave without pay." I only got it one time out of seventeen years.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Molini, have you been able to sign back on again?
Okay. Can you hear, okay?
You're still coming in and out, but try, try to say it.
Are you here?
We heard that part.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to say, support our city workers, our base collection, our essential workers, firefighters, and want the city council to do right by them. It's fair, it's only equitable, and it's only the moral thing to do. Please consider going ahead and moving on these raises for these fine people. Thank you.
You know, I, I wish I could go on with the presentations, and I will, but I can't act like this is a normal day, looking at these, me and... I'm the only Durhamite on this dais. And I know a lot of these gentlemen, and I know a lot of these city workers who are like me, who love Durham, and who work for Durham. I know this is about the first time that I really wanted to cry, because I'm not a crier. But I have been in pain, and a lot of us behind watching a lot of this stuff. And it's not right. And I would be remiss if I do this as a Durhamite first, a person born and raised in this city, never lived anywhere else, to look in your faces and tell you that's what's going on is right. There are three of us that saw this day coming back in June. We had the opportunity, and we tried. So I won't take that it's all of us. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bear that burden. There has to be exactly where it is on full. Now, I'm not running anymore. All I do is care about this city. But one of the reasons I'm not running anymore is because of this kind of stuff. And I'm not gonna be silent any longer. I've been in public office for thirty years, almost longer than everybody up here combined that's an elected official. I've been in hard places over at that courthouse. And a lot of us in this room know I've seen a lot of people in the courtrooms over the years, but I have never seen stuff like this.
That's true.
Never. There is a way, and there have been ways. We have to have a balanced budget. That's statutorily mandated. And I'm a math major, so you can't tell me about numbers. I got a degree in that with honors. I know numbers. This did not have to be. So today, and this is by accident that I had on these colors, but it was by God, I believe, I'm standing with you today, tomorrow, and every day. I got enough friends, so I'm not here to be liked. I got enough family, so I don't need no more love. But I am always gonna stand for justice and fairness. And so I can look at you all today and tell you, I'm gonna stand with you. And I'll open the floor for the other ones, and you can call it grandstanding, you can call it what it is, but I'll take that, because I am Bull City Strong. I am from this city. To my left, you got the floor. Have anything you want to say?
Good afternoon. While the mayor said she's not a crier, I'm a very emotional person, because I've been through a lot. And today, I'm really not feeling well. I have a bad cold, but I had to be here today. I have fought my whole life for social and economic justice. As a little girl in the South Bronx, going up in humble beginnings, and then becoming a professional social worker, and now a professor of education of social work. I put my name in the hat in May of two thousand and twenty-two to be able to be a voice for the people, because I saw that that was not happening. And it has been pretty hell since I've been up here. But I'm standing, I'm gonna continue to stand, and I'm gonna continue to fight, even if it's three of us, for what I know is right. And I'm not about just conversation. A lot of times, I just sit up here and I listen. I'm about action. And what keeps me in the fight since I've been through pretty hell is because of people like you. It's because I know that you want to stay here in Durham. You know, I have a real problem when people say they don't really want to live in Durham. That's baloney. You want to live in Durham, but you can't live in Durham. But that's the myth that's out there, that you really don't want to live in Durham. That's baloney. Who wouldn't want to live in Durham, where you could just come and live in Durham and go to work? That's, but that's the myth that's out there, that y'all really don't want to live in Durham. You can't afford to live in Durham. I've been standing with you, I've been standing with the firefighters, I'm gonna continue to stand, and I'm telling you why I continue to stand, and why I didn't give up when people wanted me to give up, when people wanted me to leave this council, is because of you. And it's because I know that somebody fought for me, and somebody fought for me with integrity, which I've had my whole life. And it's been pretty hell, and I'm saying it, I don't care anymore. It's been pretty hell since I've been on here, but I'm gonna continue to fight for you. They wanted me gone, but I'm still standing, and I'm standing with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank, good afternoon to my colleagues and everyone in the chamber. The notion that anybody on this council wanted anybody gone is a lie. It's a pure lie. It has always been a lie, to lie today. Here's how we're gonna get there. For those of you that have ever used Layaway or put anything on Layaway or had to make plans to buy something, the city's not really different. Five thousand dollars right now or else is not really a way we can run the city. I'm just gonna keep it real with y'all. Let me talk, we didn't interrupt y'all. Five thousand dollars immediately, that's what it said, or else, we can't run the city like that. Because if we do, we'll be good for about a year and a half, and then afterwards, we won't be able to pay you anymore. Brother, please sit down, please. That's not the way we work here. We don't make anything as a city. We don't sell anything. We don't produce anything. The only way we get money is from you. It's through taxes. If I walked into your house and said, and you need a new car, a new refrigerator, and I say, empty your savings account right now, just get it. Most folk can't roll like that. You gotta, you gotta look at what you gotta do with food, medicine, who's got a doctor's appointment coming up, who's got tuition, and you make a plan. Now, if somebody pulled out a napkin and did math on the back of a napkin for you and said, this is the way you can run the city, elect them. Put it, put, put them up here. Here's how we're gonna get there. The reason why we have to study how we spend money is because as a government, once we spend it, we can only spend it one. We can spend it any way we want, but we can only spend it once. And once it's spent, the only way we can get more is from you. I am not, I am not going to vote with my left hand to give you money, knowing that the next year, we gotta re-up, and then take more from you next year to keep that going. I'm not gonna do it. Elect somebody else. Elect somebody else. And I'm, go for it. Because, because, because if it were that easy, so two thousand and twenty-three is when we just figured it out? Of all, after all these years, and I'm glad Brother brought up Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King was actually supposed to be in Durham on April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight, when he was in Memphis. So there, there, there's some poetry there, there's some, some prophecy there, prophetic, that he was actually supposed to be in Durham, but he was working with sanitation workers. Somebody mentioned above market rate, want, want us to pay you above market rate. Twenty-eight dollars an hour, may not be enough, you want to get to thirty-five dollars an hour. We have to work the plan to do that. It was not two percent this year, it was six percent. And these things are all public, you can read this. It's, 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 it's four plus two is six. It, 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 please, please, we don't, we don't work that way here. All of this is public. You can go read the budget. The plan, the plan we are doing now, the study we are doing now, will put us in a position to do more responsibly, just like you run your own households. That's how we have to run the city. Now, I'm not running for anything. I'm not, I'm not running for reelection. But what I do know is, what I do know is that if we do it the way some folk have been asking, and I don't know what their experience is of running a city, I, you know, I'm not gonna question that. I know folk have different ideas, but I have learned some things being in this job. And what I've learned is, we don't have, the money doesn't belong to us. It's your money. Everything we do, has, everything we do, we give it to you one year, and then what we gonna do next year? Where's it coming? Yeah, okay. All right. The reason why, the reason why, the reason why, the reason why we're doing the study is so we can do it responsibly and make sure that we can keep doing it. Now, if you run your household that way and it works for you, great. But running a household of three hundred thousand people with money from things that we don't sell or make is very, very different. Now, 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 don't, 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 don't believe, don't believe what we say. Watch out, the three hundred dollars, that was the mayor's idea. Somebody said just three hundred dollars? That was the mayor's, the mayor said three hundred dollars. That was her recommendation during the budget. You know what, you know what? What I asked for was ten million dollars for Fayetteville. I asked for a million dollars for guaranteed income. A, 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 NCCU asked for ShotSpotter, got them that. So no one's gonna question what I've been doing for the black community in record, in the streets, indeed, for years. That's public. Google it, that's public. What we have before us now is an opportunity to, and, and Durham, folks study Durham all the time. They do study Durham, whether for affordable housing. Durham has one of the best benefits packages of any city, go, go check it out, of any city in this state. Medical, dental, vision, Durham has one of the best packages. They look to us for those type of things. Now, we gonna get the money right, but if we do it, one fell swoop, or do it, you gotta do it right now, or else, it's not gonna work long term. I have no, this, it's not my money. I support reparations. If I could, I'd be writing checks every day for people. It's not my money. But what I, what I, what I will not do is make promises upfront today, and then next year, when I'm off the council, I'm back in private life, set folk up and, and have them asking what happened, because we wanted to make you feel good upfront without a long-term plan. I won't do it. I won't do it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Let me clarify a couple of things that you said, Mayor Protem. First of all, the three hundred dollars that I suggested as a part of, as my ask, as a part of the budget, which was the only ask, was simply there as a bonus. It wasn't meant to be contemplated in, in exchange for not getting a raise. So they're two different things. And if you're suggesting that somehow or another, as I fold back into private life because I'm not running again, I'm still gonna be in Durham. I'm still gonna work in, as a public official, not in this capacity, but I'm still gonna work. So what I say, I stand on. So don't try to detract from me not running. Get it straight, man. So, so the, the bonus was contemplated, it's just there. But it won't in exchange for y'all not getting a raise. That was not a part of my request. I have never worked in a place, other than when I came to the city, where you didn't get something at Christmas time. Right? You got a turkey at Central, at least. You know, at the courthouse, you get something, part of something. So when I saw that, that's why I said, can we at least give them three hundred dollars as a Christmas bonus? But that was never in lieu of your raise. That was supposed to be in addition to, not subtracted from, or a part of the consideration for your raise. Two different things, two different sets of numbers. Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, um, there's so many things here. I'm just gonna stick to speaking directly to our staff and saying that I think I've been very clear on where I stand, and making sure that you understood or overstood that you are essential workers. You deserve to be paid a fair wage. And when the firefighters were in here trying to make sure that that happened, I was looking for you all. I'm glad you're here now. To Mr. Chavis, I think you heard who our city manager's been listening to, because it's not the mayor, and that's been the problem. I think there's been lots of commentary around how this happened, and it's not limited, it's just, this is what you can see. This is, this is how you can see it. I mean, I think it, it, it's very clear that we've gotten beside ourselves and forgotten what it is to be working at a wage and living in a community that we, I mean, multiple generations of folks, I, I think Antonio's story just resonates very, and, and Ms. Gloria's story as well. It's, it's just really hard to look you all in the eye and say we're doing what we should be doing. And knowing that we've been developing this city like, you know, land is not a commodity. And we continue to put such a heavy burden on infrastructure, which means the essential workers, and we have not put a plan in place, and we have not moved in a way that would be beneficial to the citizens and residents who do live here. And so we've been losing a lot of you. And I've noticed this over the years. I've complained about it since the previous mayor. And, you know, it's not, it's not lost on me that I, I sat here alone, five to one on that vote for that raise, or six to one on that vote for that raise, knowing that all of our employees weren't paid where they needed to be paid, especially on fire. We had been having that conversation. I've been talking to UE one fifty. I had been bringing those issues to the council and being dismissed. And it wasn't until our current mayor started listening and paying attention for herself, that she started to see exactly what I saw, is that our city is in shambles, and there is a hollowing out that is occurring under the patriarchy of progressive. There are folks running around here talking about they're so progressive, they forgot They're so progressive, they can't see how creating a situation where your workers can't afford to live in the city, whether you're doing a ninety-five... whether you're doing a $95 million bond, or you're building affordable housing for folks in the Housing Authority locations, but only some of them. I mean, it's all for show, and none of it is real. And that is what hurts me the most. Because I know that we could be doing public housing that was actually for you all if we were working collectively and collaboratively. And it would not be difficult. There's plenty of capital. There's plenty of capital. I know that this is an election cycle, and I want to be very clear that this does not have anything for me to do with an election. It has everything to do with... I'm not from Durham. I wasn't born here, but I'm gonna die here. This is where my family is. This is where I planted my roots. This is where I'm raising my children. This is where my family, my friends, like my neighbors, all of you all have been such critical parts of my life. Like, this city made me. It continues to make me. And yes, I'll trip and fall a few more times before I get there, but, you know, that's life. I wouldn't want to do it anywhere else. I have been here since 2007, and I am a completely different person and the same, all at the same time. And I have been growing with you all. When I was a stay-at-home mom with twins and a three-year-old, lugging around to these meetings, trying to figure out what was going on, why they trying to close my grocery store, why they trying to shut down all the streets. All of the people who were in this room and in this building were the people I turned to. And it's really been hard. It's really been hard watching the city be undermined. And I don't know any other way than to tell it. And so I started telling it, but folks didn't want to hear it. So I'm gonna keep saying to you that this is on all of us, because it didn't just happen overnight. It didn't just happen on June 20th. It happened in 2015, and then in 2017, and then in 2019, and then 2021. And it'll happen again in 2023. In each cycle, you have people who stand up and say that they're for you. And then when they're finished, they turn their backs on you. I want to be very clear that it was Councilmember Johnson who stated that you could get a $5,000 bonus. Where is she now? I mean, I just want to know, has she been to see you? Has she talked to you about it? Because she's not running. She doesn't need you anymore. It just really pains me, because I sit here, I'm not... It's just absolutely ridiculous. And you know it. You know it. And as long as you know it, I'm okay. But this city's gotta make a decision about where it stands on that, because the politics has to stop. People's lives are at risk. You can't say that we want to do something about gun violence and treat this many black folk like this. You can't say you want to do anything about our communities and making sure that we have equity or fair wages. I mean, and then treat your firefighters and your police, all your essential workers, your first responders. I mean, I understand, at this point, we have firefighters taking 911 calls? And that's okay? It's not. What you did for us in COVID is commendable. And what we did on June 20th is not. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm gonna be here. We're gonna continue to keep working on this. We're gonna keep working on this. What I would like to do is to make a motion, just to see where we are, because there's five of us here today. Five.
We got four.
There's five of us here. I'd like to make a motion that we support our city workers and at least take the first step and acknowledge that our essential workers should receive a $5,000 bonus.
And I'd like to second that.
Point of order. This is a work session. We do not entertain motions and... I will...
Here, we'll have the attorney speak to...
So, Madam Mayor, council procedures provide that the city council does not take official votes at work sessions. You do have the option, of course, to suspend your own rules. Requires a vote of four members of the council. But also, a compensation, a compensatory measure, would have to be passed by ordinance, which by state law, state statute, it's in the city's charter, also requires a vote of four council members to approve. So those are some of the considerations that the council should keep in mind.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and vote.
I'd like to second.
Point of order. It would still not be an ordinance. This would need to be done by ordinance, Madam Mayor. So that's my point of order. I would be willing to put this on the agenda, as we normally do in regular order, for a... Madam Mayor, could you call order in the chamber, please?
Y'all hold up for a second for me. Okay.
I would be, in regular order, be willing to put this, as we normally do, as an agenda item for a future work session, to discuss it and then move it as we do normally. I have no objection to that, but we can't... Madam Mayor, would you please...
Wait, Mr. Chavis, hold on. Hold up, Mr. Chavis. We still on the... The attorney's giving us a point of order, and I think he's trying to address that. Thank you, Mr. Chavis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I recommend that this be pursued in regular order. This is, as the council said, this would be an ordinance, which is a higher threshold for us to cross in this. Now, this isn't a resolution. This is compensation, and we have established orders to do that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I wanted to add one more procedural issue, which I think the Mayor Protem is pointing to. So in addition to the council not taking votes at a work session, you also have to have a matter before the council. There is no item on today's agenda that corresponds to Councilmember Freeman's current request, so the council would need to add that to the agenda. Rule 2.5 of the council procedures governs that. So with a vote of four members, you could add the item to the agenda. With a vote of four members, you could suspend the rules to vote on an item. And actually, there are some time parameters that are specified in Rule 2.5 as well. I don't like giving advice like this on the fly, because this is a pretty atypical procedure going on. But the better process would be to have an item added to the agenda for the council's proper consideration and thorough consideration.
So are you saying that another work session, we will have to add it as an agenda item or at a city council meeting? Agenda or either and/or?
I have a point of order. Madam Mayor, do we need ordinance to direct staff to look into something?
You do not need an ordinance, council member, to direct staff to look into something. But if you are voting on actual compensatory measures, that is an ordinance that would have to be passed.
So the request would be for staff to look into making sure that this move forward as an item?
Just direction to staff? That would be fine.
So I want to make sure that we vote to suspend the rules first, and then I would like to move that we have staff take a look at how they develop that ordinance to compensatorily make the bonus available.
Point of order. We don't need to suspend the rules to do that, Councilmember Freeman. We can just...
We have an attorney. We have an attorney.
Let the attorney respond to if that's appropriate, what she's saying. Basically, she's...
I mean, council at its discretion can direct staff at any time. You don't need an official vote to provide direction to the staff, unless it's not...
Well, you know, I just want to make sure that you feel comfortable with it.
It's not about my comfort level. It's about you all's comfort level with the process.
So I think what she's saying is that we put this on an agenda.
So can we...
Add the direct staff.
Can we make sure that we have a vote to say that we want to put that on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'm willing to go thumbs up per regular order. This is not rise to the level of suspending the rules. We shouldn't pretend that it does. We can... I recommend just going...
Wait, 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 wait. Hold on. We can't talk over each other, and I want to make sure that the people who have been directed by all of this or affected by all of this understand what we're doing, which is why I'm trying to slow it down so we understand. Now, Councilwoman Freeman first, and then Mayor Protem, you respond to that, so that we can kind of... They will understand what we're doing. It's fairly technical when you get into these procedural issues. So go ahead.
So we would be making sure that staff understood that there are four votes, or five votes, to make sure that there is a bonus ordinance assigned for the $5,000 to the essential workers of the city of Durham.
No. I'm sorry, were you finished? No. What we would be doing is placing an item per regular order on our agenda, which may result in a $5,000 bonus. But first, we have to get it on our agenda, so we can talk about it, so we can be in compliance with the law, and then vote on it, as we do all the time, week after week, month after month. This week... I'm gonna give it thumbs up.
So what is it? So what did she say about in terms of suspending the...
We don't have to do...
I'm just asking, what...
No. From my understanding, from an attorney Ray Burgis right here, we don't have to suspend the rules to ask staff to put it as an agenda item. And then we will have... We need to direct staff as to what we're asking them to do, and then we will have a discussion. So we just, at this point, need a thumbs up to get it on our... Now, I will not be here on September 18th. I won't be here, that, but you all will be free to go ahead, because the sooner we do this, the better. But I will be here for that work session on that Thursday. Okay. So we can do it on September 21st, put it as an agenda item. I would... Now, for my specific request, I would like to see some numbers associated with the $5,000 request, so that we will know what that looks like for our essential workers. So that will be firefighters, solid waste, just so we have an idea what we're talking about. And also, I know I don't want to really intervene in the process that the city manager is moving forth, and hopefully, they can come to a resolution prior to that time. But if not, I want to make sure that we're not impeding that progress for you all to continue to talk. So, and hopefully, it'll be settled before then. If not, that would be my specific request. I don't know if others have a specific request around the data that we would want staff to gather in the interim.
Yes. The essential workers would be everyone who had to physically be on site for work. So everyone who had to come to work during that time. So I don't want to leave out, like, janitorial services, or anyone who had to physically be in place, who could not stay home from work.
So that would be your request? Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I always say, it's not my place to tell someone how you should feel. And I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you all that today either. I'm also not gonna continue being divisive. I'm not gonna... I'm also not gonna tell you just what you want to hear. All I can do is tell you I will be committed to making it happen, and that's where I've always been. We have a city to run. We have a city to govern. If I'm being at all honest, I think we're borderline being irresponsible right now. And I don't want to give you... I don't want to position us to where you have a moment here of sensation, and then we just fall apart later. So what I'm committed to is making sure that... And it's not just y'all. I'm talking about the entire city staff. And not everybody does the same thing. I said this before, when we first gave the bonus to police and fire, because not everybody's running through a fire. But also, not everybody's picking up trash. So I hear exactly what you're saying. And I'm ready to work to make that happen. That's what I thought we were gonna be doing anyway. I'm sure everybody see how frustrating this is. Hold on a second for me. Hold on a second. Because you won't find me being rude, I promise you. And you can always reach out to me. We can talk. I don't do that. I don't do that other stuff. But the fact of the matter is, it's real easy to be in this moment and kind of like, try and negotiate this right here, right now. We don't... These figurehead city up here, we're elected. We're elected officers. We do policy. We don't do the operations. Literally, to be honest with you, the best thing we could do right now is say, Madam Manager, what is your plan on making this happen? And what is most realistic? That is how we actually do it. You... I run a restaurant. I run a restaurant. That's what I do. And before that, I taught. I've never run a city budget. I've never run a city. Now, I've done the homework to get there, but I'm not gonna pretend that I know all of the intricates into how we can maneuver these numbers right now and then just make it happen just like that. So I want anyone who's living in Durham to be able to live here and afford to live here. I want you to have the best... I want Durham... I want folks around the state and around the country to say, yo, you work for the city of Durham. It's like that. That's the goal. And I want to be able sustainably get there. But I promise you, I would not be reckless and just pretend that we can wave a magic wand. I don't mind making tough decisions. We were able to have a little extra left over. So the tough decision is, what do we do with that? Do we not hire more people? Do we use the money from those vacancies and just pay more who we have? And you may have to work harder. You get paid a little more, but we gotta be in a position to make those tough decisions. I want to responsibly get there. For me, this is not about who loved Durham more. It's not about who's from here versus who's come here. All I can do is just be practical with you. And that's me talking to you all that are here in the room, as well as the folks that are not in the room. But what I do know is, we gotta be able to have an honest conversation. An honest conversation. And I... Here we are, going back and forth in the room. This is not representative of everybody. We gotta be able to have that space, where we can have that conversation, know exactly what you want and exactly what we can make happen. But y'all live here, but you're also taxpayers. You live here, you're taxpayers. That means our goal is to get to the point where it works for everybody, while still being able to run this. That's the responsible thing to do. That's not me telling you what you want to hear. That's telling me that my commitment, as you're elected, is getting us there. This is not about a 4-3 block, a 4-3 vote. People vote their conscience the way they want. This is not about an election. Trust me, it's not about an election. I'm running because I think that's the thing to do. But it's not about that, guys. It's really about being responsible. And I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you that these are the numbers. I'm gonna shift around, because that's not what I do. That's the manager's job. And the manager would tell us what the plan is. If we don't like the plan, then we say, man, that ain't gonna work. Come back with another plan. But we hear you. We hear you. But we are not the folks that are gonna work those numbers. We're the folks that approve those numbers. We're the folks that approve those numbers when it works for everybody. That's the responsible thing to do. So you won't find me telling you who loves this place more than the other. You won't find me being irresponsible when it comes to trying to just change everything up right now. What we do have is a sense of urgency to get this done right now. But I will tell you this finally, and this is mentioned earlier. The city does not go out and sell lemonade and hot dogs to make money. We make money when people pay their taxes. And if I'm being honest with you, some of the main people that are telling you that they're gonna just make this happen are the same people that restrict those taxes from coming in. So please, don't let this be an emotional transaction. Let it be practical. I promise you, we'll get there. I promise you. And anybody can reach out to me anytime. Trust me.
Wait, wait for a second, y'all. I just wanted to say something.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to acknowledge the, the city employees who are here in the chambers, as well as guests. We had an opportunity to spend time and talk to each other yesterday, so I'm gonna be speaking to the deists today, because we already talked yesterday. What I want to say about where money comes from in the budget, the budget has been adopted. It's a legal, it's a legal budget adoption, and that happened in June. That's also been said here. The tax rate has already been set. The tax rate that is set for the budget for this year that we're working in, it, it has already been set, and it won't be set again until next year. What is being considered here is a bonus or a one-time payment that will come from the city savings. Just later today, in this meeting that we're in, we're gonna hear an estimate of where we ended our fourth quarter, which is June 30th of 2023. We always make decisions about one-time payments, or one-time expenses at the end of a fiscal year. We have to wait, if it's gonna be a one-time, to see how much that money actually is. We, we estimate it, but we have to wait till we get the final numbers. So, as it relates to what is being asked of the administration to come back with, I am going to ask Mayor for more clarity around that, of who would be included in a $5,000... I, I've heard some conversation, but the reason I really raised my hands is because I don't have any clarity at this moment as to what the, what the number of people you're referencing, and what kind of jobs that they actually do.
I believe the request for the $5,000 came from the city workers, union folks who've signed up. But I would say that I want to see the numbers so that people kind of understand from who we consider our essential workers. So I would think that that would be the, the public, solid waste folks, our firefighters, our police officers, and our, what's the other one I just thought of? Public works. Those are the first first responders, which is gonna be a fairly large number, but I want people to have an idea of what you're talking about when you talk about a $5,000 bonus. I think for me, a lot of it is miscommunication with folk. When people don't understand, and a lot of times, I don't understand a lot of this process, I'm still learning some of this, but we have to make sure that people understand what they're asking, and, and we put it to them in numbers that will show the range of numbers in terms of how much is that gonna cost, and the fact that we've already passed a budget, which I know you've been telling them about. We've passed this budget, so if we're gonna do something different, it's gonna come, have to come out of a savings account or our fund balance. So just to give a clearer picture, I'm hoping that you all resolve it before we come back on the 21st, but if not, we need to have some numbers around if the council has to move, in a way. So, I would think that the clarity is, who do you all, let me ask you, who do you consider your essential workers to be? Maybe that's the better question. Who do you consider your essential workers to be?
Every employee that we have here is essential to running the government business, the business of government, whether they creating paychecks, or they doing, you know, filling potholes. Every, every employee that we have is essential. So that is gonna be my answer. That's my response. It's every employee that provides or supports the provision of city services. We're all essential.
But then can you break it down in categories? Firefighters, police officers, public works. We have solid waste. I understand what you're saying. I consider myself to be an essential worker too. We all are. We get there. Everybody's important, but you have to be able to, you have to be able to quantify, because those are the terminology that I've come into. It's, there is a, you have your first responders, I guess, and the people that I call the first first responders, which are your public works folks, so those folks, and I think Councilwoman Freeman had a, how did you term it? You said it was persons who were at work, on the job, doing COVID, when everybody else could be at home.
It's essentially the blue collar workers.
Madam Mayor, if I may speak, that is not enough guidance. You know, that, that is not enough. I mean, we can bring everyone, we, we can, you know, we, we have about 200, over 200 job classifications among the 2,300 employees that we have. And, you know, that is a lot of different job classifications. People do a lot of different things, and that is why often, when we are anticipating providing wages, salaries, you know, bonuses, we're looking at it across the board. We're not picking one group of employees that we have and individually deciding, you know, what is best. That is, that is not a best practice in terms of, of having a payroll or a compensation system. So it is very difficult to go away from a conversation like this and have any number other than everyone.
Well, what about when we have our city manager meeting? I will bring clarity to that. Does that work?
That works.
All right. All right. All right, you all, we have a couple of presentations, but I am gonna take about a 10-minute recess so I can walk with you all out and try to answer the remaining questions that you may not have been able to get answered. Okay? All right. So, give us about 10 minutes, we'll come back.